Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education Meeting on this Monday, January 23rd. Want to welcome you to the meeting. Before we kick it off here, I do need to read a brief statement, which is that a government body may conduct a meeting by electronic means only in circumstances where such a meeting in person is impossible or impractical, and only if the governmental body provides public access to the conversation of the meeting to the extent reasonably possible. The place of the meeting is the place in which the communication originates, and the minutes of the meeting shall include a statement explaining why the meeting in person was impossible or impractical as pursuant to Iowa Code 21.8. And so we have a board member traveling and who is joining us electronically. So with that, call the meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of...
Thank you, Susie. And second, RJ, thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving now to communications. We're delayed to have Kiana back.
Hello all. I'm so excited to see you all again. It's been a little while. Student Senate has a few updates tonight. I believe at the last meeting Anna gave a report for our candy cane sales, of which went to Eli Flint and his family and his fight against cancer. We have an updated number. Student Senate raised $500 with candy cane sales and additional funds that Student Senate has received to donate to Eli and his family. So we have that check his way. We are very excited for him and his family to receive that money. Student Senate is now making Valentine's Day plans. We are planning to have another rose sale, which was a super big hit last year on Valentine's Day. We also plan to partner with our Women's Leadership Group on a bake sale the morning of, with proceeds going to a women's shelter or Habitat for Humanity. So really excited. In addition, Student Senate is exploring new outreach events for the spring, as well as planning our annual Do Better, Be Better 5K in April, which is always really exciting. It's an event that we love to host every year. Women's wrestling has had a phenomenal season, with more champions than I could possibly list with my time slot tonight. So congrats to you all, girls. We are so proud of you. Forty individuals from Cedar Falls High School placed for state speech, and everyone that competed in Cascade this past weekend that qualified for large group state will compete in Waterloo on February 4th. Congrats to you all. In addition, senior leadership has nominations open for this senior speaker. So to any seniors watching tonight, this is your reminder that you will be able to nominate individuals or yourself for senior speaker until February 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kiana. Any questions for you? All right. Thank you very much. Good to see you again. And now Janelle.
I'll just step up before you even...
Did she leave anything for you to tell us about?
She, you know, she, we have, I think, just one thing that's duplicated maybe tonight, so let's share what my update is. I was glad she mentioned the speech, because I did not actually have all those results. So I was really glad to hear that. Just wanted to remind everyone that our preschool registration opens this Friday at noon for the next school year. It's really important for parents. If you want to get in, you need to be on at noon, and it probably would behoove you to go onto the website and look at it ahead of time for what information you need to have, because you'll need to input information about you, your child, and then also what your top three choices are going to be. So let's make sure you have that kind of decided ahead of time before you go on to register. So that'll be live Friday at noon. Anna had mentioned last time, and then I should have given a shout out to Kiana about what a great group they had at the Pack the Dome event. This is the high school volunteer club that was there on Martin Luther King Junior Day, and of course, this is with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and the Volunteer Center Cedar Valley. And they packed backpacks for the backpack program, and it was really great to see. We also had a contingent from Aldrich Elementary that came, and then also from the Cedar Falls Schools Foundation Board. So thanks to all of those groups for volunteering on that day. Piers is a group that has been started at the high school. It stands for Passionate, Empathetic, Empowering, and Respectful Students. It actually has been started in working with Tammy Fromm, who's a special education teacher at the high school. There were some students that had worked on this program at Pete Junior High, and of course, are now at the high school, Owen Brinker and Kaylee McSweeney, and they've now asked to start this program at the high school. So this group meets together. They did trivia, drank hot chocolate, and ate lunch together last week. This is a couple shots from all of that happening. And then in December, they went together to Buff City Soap and made bath bombs. So this is a great partnership for all of our students, and really want to thank the students for leading it. And then Tammy Fromm, a previous Gold Star teacher, is one of the best of the best there for us at the high school. So thanks to her and those students. Congratulations to Orchard Hill Elementary Principal Andrea Christopher. She was named Leader Valley Administrator of the Year, and this Orchard Hill student, Dorno, presented her the award at the Leader Valley event. So congratulations to Andrea and all the great work she does at Orchard Hill. This just happened this weekend. There was a regional poetry out loud competition at the Hurst Center, and there were two winners. Lydia Newsome is actually a student at West High, and then Hannah Batterson, who is at the high school. And then you can see on the right, a bunch of the students. We also had Senior Ella Hertz and sophomore Chandler Taylor were first and second runner up as well. So Hannah and then Lydia will then compete at the state competition in Des Moines in March. Wanted to do a couple shout outs. This is our bowling team. They had a sweep on senior night, wins with wins over Xavier. And then they will be back in the Missouri Valley Mississippi Divisional meet in Cedar Rapids this week. They have this great poster with all of their Booster Club and Team sponsors. So congratulations to them, and good luck as they're moving on to postseason play. And then, of course, Kiana mentioned our women's wrestling. They were conference champs this weekend, so the first ever conference championship for women's wrestling for us, and we brought that one home. So congratulations to all of those girls. And then the men's swimming had a great weekend as well. They were second place in the MVC Super Meet. The additional honors were the high school won the Mississippi Division of that MVC Super Meet. Not honestly sure how that works, so don't ask me, ask Troy Becker with how the conferences work, but it's a division within the conference. We won our division. John Butler was named our division swimmer of the year, and then our coaches were named division coaches of the year. So congratulations to them, and as they move on to postseason competition. Gold Star teacher nominations are now open, so we encourage everyone to goldstarteacher.org. You could submit those nominations through February 20th. We have a great new video of the high school construction that we just released last week, so we encourage everyone, you can go to our Facebook, Twitter, find that video, and then we'll also have it released in our e-newsletter this week that we'll send out to everyone. Of course, you can see the live stream and all those updates on the website, and of course, our One Team One Dream fundraising continues for the pool and the performance center, and follow along for any other updates.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Questions? Great. Good job. Thank you. We're going to stick to Janelle's. So we have Janelle Ruzika. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
I don't usually get... That's wonderful. Welcome, Janelle. You're here to present about the 21-22 audit.
Yes. Thank you again for having me again this year. I'm Janelle Ruzika with Carney Alexander Merrill, and we conducted the audit for Cedar Falls Community School District as of June 30, 2022. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the district's financial statements in accordance with our generally accepted accounting principles. We are responsible to express our opinion on these financial statements based on our audit, which is in accordance with our generally accepted auditing standards and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government audit standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. And I also want to add in that we did put in our opinion that the financial position did present fairly well of the financial position of Cedar Falls Community School District as of June 30, 2022. So here's a pie graph of your revenue for all funds. You can see within this graph that the biggest portion of your revenue is coming from your propertax revenue, and then the other about 50 or so percent is coming from unrestricted state grants and operating grants. This is pretty consistent with prior years.
Now, when you say grants, and sorry for jumping in, it's, are you talking about the, what the state legislature apportions to, you're calling it a grant?
Correct.
We would call it...
State funding.
In our general speech, supplemental state aid.
Yep.
Just wanted to clarify for my own purpose, and maybe that was a question for others. Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For expenditures for all funds, you can see, here's a graph of that, and the biggest section there on the left are the facilities acquisition. I think that's kind of to be expected. It encompasses in your construction and process. You know, you've got the beautiful school that's getting built, the high school. So there's a big portion of your expenditures. The other section there that's really big is your instruction, which you would expect within a school district as well. And then within the other smaller categories there, you know, AEA flow through, your transportation, student support, et cetera. Here's a condensed statement of net position for the governmental funds. You can see as of the end of the fiscal year, you have total assets of $280 million, total liabilities of $182 million, and then you've got your net deferred inflows and outflows of $56.5 million with net assets of $42 million. I'm sure it kind of jumps out to you as well as it jumped out to me, your net deferred inflows and outflows. You go from 26 to 22, up to $56.5 million. This has to do with the pension. The net pension liability, you know, is prepared by a third party, audited by the state of auditors, provided to all of the government entities, so we get that information from them. But just kind of lay out some of the information, you know, your net pension liability, a three year trend, we went from $29 million to $35 million, down to $703,000. And then the deferred outflows and inflows fluctuate, and then you had a proportionate share of the allocable planned pension expense of a actual income of $2.4 million. It just has to do with, you know, projected versus actual differences when, you know, the actuaries put these together.
So those numbers, so just to make sure I understand, those were some pretty big differences when you talked about it in the third year? Were those net changes each of those years?
Correct.
And so we had a fairly small change in the net liability?
Yeah. So the net deferred inflows and outflows changed dramatically from prior year to this year. I mean, it all really changed dramatically statewide. I looked at other school districts just to make sure, you know, did I look at something wrong, did I misunderstand, and it's statewide.
And I just want to verify, just for, that pension liability sits on our books as a contingency, but that would be in the rare case, basically, that, I mean, Ipers disappeared. I mean, for that, the state of Iowa disappeared, you know?
Exactly.
So it's a pretty, it's a pretty, I know the accounting rules require you to put it on there, and the actuaries do their work to estimate what that would be, but as far as an actual liability on our book, it's a pretty remote possibility that we'd ever actually need to, that it would actually become an actual liability?
Yep. You're absolutely correct.
Okay. And then, sorry, on a follow-up question for that, our, so our net assets are, if you look at that over the last three years, we're kind of on a declining...
Correct.
As an auditor, does that make you concerned at all about our financial position?
No, not at all, because actually, if we get into the next slides, it kind of helps explain a little bit more that a big portion of why your net assets decreased so much from last year to this year has to do with your facility acquisitions.
Okay.
So we'll get into that in the next couple of slides.
Great. Sorry. Sorry for jumping in.
No, you're absolutely, these are great questions. I appreciate them. Here is a historical statement of the net position. We kind of just touched on that, so I don't want to dwell on it too much. But here you can see your governmental funds, the balance sheets for the different governmental funds, the general fund, the debt service, capital projects, or the non-major. You can see there, like, the capital projects, you have total assets of $85 million. That's a big jump from the prior year, but that includes your GO bonds, and so you had, you know, a new bond this year and over $65 million of cash that came through, and so that's why that increased so dramatically from the prior year. Oh, I guess the slide before is where I was going to talk about why your net assets changed so much. So your revenue has been comparable pretty steady for the past several years, but the expense decreased, causing about an $8 million swing from change in '20 to '21 and '21 to '22 due to your increase in your facility acquisitions. You know, a lot of it's in construction process right now. And then the other part, too, is now you're starting to pay debt interest on your long-term debt, and now you're adding another $69.9 million bond, so we're going to see that interest increase over the years. Here's a statement of net position for the proprietary fund, which includes your school nutrition and coffee shop. Here you can see the governmental capital assets. So here you can see really where that construction in progress increased from, you know, $363,000 the last couple of years, now to $37 million. So you can see how the net position and capital outlays really increased. And here's the same thing for your business type activity, which is going to be your food nutrition. And here's a graph of your debt. So there you can really see where that new bond, that $69.9 million bond, is added this current year compared to prior years. So right now, with your general obligation bond and your revenue bonds, you have a total bond of $144 million. And then your other liabilities include your compensation absences, OPEB, and then the pension liability.
So just to ask you a follow-up question on that, if I may?
Yep.
Obviously, that's a pretty large increase in our debt, and do you have any concerns about our capacity to service that debt?
I do not.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
There is one component unit that we have to report on the financials, and that is the Cedar Falls Schools Foundation. Here you can see where their net position increased about $600,000 from the prior year. Contributions were about $1.3 million, a little bit of other income, and then the investment income, actually with the markets, the way they were, has more of a loss, an unrealized loss, to bring that down a little bit, about $600,000. That's to be expected.
Is that because it's netted out of some interest expense in a short-term type of account?
Correct. Yep. So your investment income's going to include realized gains and losses, unrealized gains and losses, interest, income, dividends, and then any investment expense associated with those funds. And we're seeing across the board, whether it's a nonprofit or a school district or a for-profit, investments are just, the volatility of this last year's market has really seen a lot more in the unrealized loss category.
And going back to, excuse me, Jeff's earlier question, too, about the debt rate, there's state code and requirements about coverage rates, as well as maximum debt ceiling that a district in Iowa can hold, and we're not anywhere close to any of those. So I think we're very comfortable with where that's at.
And then finally, some summary of our auditor's results. I guess, as I said earlier, we did have that unmodified opinion on the financial statements. We did not disclose any significant deficiencies in internal control over your reporting. We did not disclose any non-compliance, which was material to the financial statements, and we did not disclose any significant deficiencies in internal control over major programs. Let's see, the unmodified opinion was issued on the compliance requirements as well, and there was no findings that were disclosed. Your major programs are your child nutrition, cluster, and ESR, and that has to do with the single audit there. Again, no instances of non-compliance or controlled deficiencies. There were no questionable costs for federal awards or any findings in regards to that. Certified budget, the expenditures for the fiscal year ending 2022 did not exceed any of the amended certified budget amounts. We did not find any expenditures that we believed did not meet any of the requirements of public purpose, or money for travel expenses for spouses of district officials or employees. And we did not see any business transactions between district and district officials or employees. Let's see, you have your surety bond coverage. There was no transactions requiring board approval that were not approved. We did not find any variances in the basic enrollment data, in the certified enrollment, excuse me, and we didn't see any variances regarding supplemental waiting. Your car report, your certified annual report was filed timely, and we did not see any instances of categorical funding used to supplant, whether then supplement, other funds. And there was no instances of non-compliance with any of the statewide sales and service tax revenue provisions. And then we like to thank you again for having us this year, and we appreciate all your staff for helping us complete this audit timely.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Janelle?
I say this every year, thank you. It's amazing the work that they do. They actually come in for five days, typically in August, for a pre-audit, to collect all the information, to go through the books, to go and ask questions, and then the actual week-long audit, I think of four or five days, takes place then, about three to four months later, after they've collected all the information, come back in and review. So it's a really extensive process and a huge amount of work, and certainly appreciate our staff, but also appreciate the work that you guys do for that.
Yep. No, thank you. We appreciate an audit of a public entity is a very important thing to do, so appreciate you, all your work that you and Janelle, all your team did as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll keep on the theme of financial reports, but this time it'll be more specific to just the district and the last month.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
So this is one of our longer reports that I have on a yearly basis, so just hold on to your hats. We'll get through it. But it is our annual district financial report. It really is a synopsis of our information that was provided in October, our certified annual report. There will be some new slides in here, some new information for each of you to review, but as we move forward, go ahead and ask questions as we go. So we'll go ahead and get started. Really, the overriding purpose of this is every topic, every slide, although not stated as topics revolve around, one, meeting the Cedar Falls students' needs, funding the educational priorities of the district, and understanding the Iowa school finance and how it meets those students' needs. So what are we going to take a look at this evening? We'll take a brief look at the governmental fund accounting standards. We'll also take a look at the foundation formula. We'll take a look at the general fund key indicators, and that includes the revenues and the expenditures, as well as the fund balances. A lot of those slides will look familiar, because again, those were presented during that October certified annual report. We'll take a look at the restricted funds, and then we'll wrap up. But really, again, this is just a synopsis of the certified annual report that was reviewed in October, with some additional information added in. So we'll go ahead and get started. So this probably looks familiar to most of you on the board, probably looks familiar to those that are watching and those in the audience this evening. I show this a lot. This is the summary of funds. This is a great depiction of the funds themselves, how they're categorized, how they can be utilized, just like corns and beans, as I've used before, they can't mix. They have their specific purposes and uses. We have our governmental fund, our proprietary fund, and our fiduciary fund, and those funds listed below each of those grain bins. But we'll review those individually and how they interact within the school district. But I added a new slide this year that breaks this down a little bit, the summary of funds and those uses. Some of you may have seen this. This depicts the revenues, how they flow through, how they're obtained by the district, as well as then the acceptable expenditures. So often, in our monthly financials, I'll indicate acceptable expenditures in our governmental, or, excuse me, in our general fund, indicating it's usually overall operations of the district. So in our general fund, those revenues are property tax, it's the state aid and the grants, as well as miscellaneous income. The expenditures specifically are the salaries, the employee benefits, as well as services, materials, supplies, specifically for transportation and others within the district. So that is specific, and that's its own silo. And you'll see those throughout. They're color-coded specifically. It's just a great resource and tool for you to reference as we review those funds specifically. As we move on, then, within the general fund, there's other silos, surprisingly, and those silos are treated separately as well, and those are categorical. These look familiar, probably, to most of you. You've probably seen some of them. Those categorical silos, again, specific purposes and uses, our teacher salary supplement as an example, the four-year-old preschool, most recently at the last board meeting, we spoke about at-risk and dropout. That would be a categorical, as well as our gifted and talented, and then our teacher leadership compensation. But they have their specific uses as well, that we have to have them categorized separately. So the foundation formula itself, specifically for the general fund, the goals and principles, they are listed on the screen for you. Some of those specific ones would be the equity and expenditures. It's for the foundation formula. It is predictable. It is pupil-driven, and we will get to that, talking about certified enrollment, enrollment itself. It provides local discretion and incentives. It does establish the maximum spending control, and we'll talk about that in a little bit on some slides in the future. And it is the same for all Iowa schools, K-12, public schools, and AEAs for the general fund foundation formula. So as we talk about the foundation formula, we also take like four key factors, and those four key factors are enrollment, equalization, supplemental state aid, or SSA, and balance. So we'll take individually, look at each of those and how they impact that foundation formula. And looking at that, open, or, excuse me, enrollment is that first important key factor. And enrollment determines the majority of our funds received at the school district, and that's based on the count of October 1st. It does, the enrollment is the times the cost per student, and that's 75% of our general fund resources. So when we take a look at October 1 of 2022, take that times the cost per pupil for our fiscal '24. There are a couple differences in between certified enrollment and served enrollment. Certified enrollment are those students living in the district, and that's what we utilize for our revenues, our general fund revenues. And then you have served enrollment, and that's for students that are attending the district, from an outside district. The funds do follow that student, so as a student is attending Cedar Falls schools from a different district, open enrolled, those dollars do flow through the district, as well as if we have students attending a different district, it does follow that student. But we do pay very close attention to enrollment when it comes to, because it is the general fund resources. So when we take a look at enrollment, we like to take a look at the enrollment history. And as you can see, for October of 2022, on the screen, we have our certified enrollment in blue, we have open enrollment in red, and tuition in in green. You'll note for fiscal, or, excuse me, October of '22, we did have a decrease in students of 44.6 from the prior year, but the red does represent that open enrollment in, which we had an increase of 34 students from the prior year to 327 students that have been enrolled in. The green is very difficult to see, because it's very minimal. We had eight students that tuitioned in. That is up from one, one from the year before, so the year before was seven. But again, we do monitor this very closely, because it is 75% of our general fund resources.
Can you explain, oh, go ahead. Can you explain what the tuition in is? I don't believe I've heard that term before.
Yeah. Tuition is students that attend the district, a lot of times from foreign exchange students or others. It is tuition that is paid specifically to the district to attend that district.
Yeah. Excuse me, it could be a couple different things. We do have students that are on visa, typically where parents might be short-term employees at UNI, one to two years. It could be families that have worked for Deere for, and they come to live in Cedar Falls. Those are tuitioned in students. There's a requirement per the federal government through really complicated regulations about tuition in. In the past, the one student, prior to open enrollment rules, regulations, when that was done one time a year, some students might choose, and families might choose actually to pay tuition to come into the Cedar Falls School District. Could be denial of open enrollment, could be residency requirements, and we've always had one or two or three of those per year, too, that choose to actually pay the per-student allotment SSA amount to enroll in Cedar Falls. Then the other component would be some of our foreign exchange students that come here through a program.
And my question was, and I don't, it may come later in your presentation, in fact, I think it does, but in a drop in enrollment, obviously, that would be a drop, because we're on a per-certified student basis, yet if we get a drop, we get, we get it one year, basically, we maintain, our revenues don't actually drop. Is that right?
We can. That would be budget guarantee. We would have to apply for that.
Oh, it's budget guarantee.
Correct. And the board would have to approve that.
Okay. But it's not, we do get less funds from, but the budget guarantee remains the same.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I just want to...
Yep.
Yep.
And we don't anticipate that we would hit the budget guarantee because of the, again, it's a formula participation in the number of enrolled students plus, you know, the number of students that are served, so we don't anticipate the budget guarantee. It's a 99% budget guarantee, and that is something that we won't be impacted by.
Okay.
Great question. Great questions. As we move forward with certified enrollment, we also take a look at enrollment projections. And this is RSP Associates did projections for us. This was updated in January of 2019. You'll note that the red line indicates the projected, as well as then the gray line is the actual. I know that's kind of difficult to see. We're within 3% to 5% of that projection each year. We do anticipate in the next few years to have a new enrollment projections for the district. But we continue to monitor this to ensure that we have the appropriate facilities, appropriate staffing, as those projections may change.
Seems pretty accurate so far.
Who does these projections, and I guess how are they figured?
So it's a demographer that we hired. They're out of Kansas City, RSP and Associates. They, they do work for hundreds of school districts across the Midwest. They might even branch out now past the Midwest. And it's a really in-depth process. There are some work that they do, not only with the city and the county, as far as having interviews, but they do a really in-depth analysis of the number of students per household, looking at that historically, the number of new housing starts, the number of migrant components, not only regionally but statewide, and what that could look like. They look at birth rates, and then they go through and they do interviews and conversations with developers about short-term and long-term planning. They do heat maps. They do a little Google map circles so we can see where each of the students are at, within each of the pockets of different neighborhoods. It's really in-depth and a really good process that we do to make sure that we can at least have a handle on where those enrollment bumps and, and numbers could come from.
How long have we been using them? Have they, historically, have they kind of followed the trend line that they projected?
Yeah. So I think we first started using them, I think maybe in 2012, I want to say. It was probably 10, 12 years ago. Since I've been here, I think we've done two updates with them. So they've done a total of three projections within 12 years. They have been, they, they kind of guarantee that they'll be within 3% to 4%. And again, I'm looking at board members that have been on for a while, within a five-year projection. We always ask them to project out 10 years just for, for planning purposes. And they're always hesitant about providing, you know, a guarantee past that five years. But they have so far been within that 3% to 4%. I think fortunately, we've been trending slightly ahead of what their projections have been. At the, you know, we set some of our bond expectations, some of the work for facilities based on the projections going back eight, nine years ago. And we are trending higher than what they projected.
About every, so about every four years or so, we've, four or five years even, getting a new projection from them.
Yeah. Yep, yep. It's been roughly, especially during that timeframe, when we're looking at some of the bond referendums, it was about every three years is kind of what we did the first few years. It's been, you know, four years since we've done one. We're looking at probably next spring potentially. So it'd be a five-year window. That way we could kind of stay within that, that numbers, that they predict for a five-year, 3% to 4%.
And the cost of that study has typically been, what, about $20,000 is the number that I?
It's a little bit greater than that.
A little bit greater, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly significant investment, but an investment that really gives us good numbers as we look at planning, especially as we look at grade levels, grade spans, where students may be coming from. And so far, there's been pretty good consistency and accuracy even within neighborhoods, whether as they plan out, when you think about turnover and transitioning. We've used this for a lot of staff planning, and it's been extremely beneficial and accurate.
Okay. Well, we made it through the first of the four key financial, key factors. We have the second one, and that's equalization. And equalization is the legislature established a law that cost per student across the state will be nearly equal, not equal, but nearly equal, to ensure every student has access to a quality education. Now, the state cost per pupil on the screen is from fiscal '22 with our audit of $7,227. You'll see that that's the minimum. There is a maximum of $7,372, a difference of $145. Why is that? That really goes back to the 1970s when the foundation formula was created. At that time, it was per pupil based on expenditure rates. And when the formula changed, that, that difference did not change. So there's 327 districts in the state of Iowa. Currently, 216 of them are at that state cost per pupil. There's 111 of them that are greater than that cost per pupil. For fiscal '23, that did change by $5. So the, the legislature has slowly worked towards decreasing that gap. For fiscal '23, we had $7,413 as the minimum state cost per pupil with the maximum of $7,553. So what does that look like? You'll see that the, this is, just depicts a graph of those school districts, and the number of school districts receive those dollars potentially greater than that cost per pupil. If we equate the difference of the fiscal '22 based on our certified enrollment, the $145 times the 55, give or, 5,500 students, give or take, it's approximately $800,000 that the district is not receiving because of that gap. But again, it is something that the legislature continues to work closely to, to, to decrease that gap. Did you have something to add, Andy?
I will. And just for the awareness, and Danelle kind of mentioned this, that we are one of the 216 districts at the minimum level, not at any of the higher levels.
No. So in addition then, we also have the supplemental state aid, or the SSA. That is the third key factor, and that's legislature and governor-controlled increasing of that dollar amount. And that's a very simple calculation. It's the prior year state cost per pupil times that state rate, approved state rate of growth. This year, it is recommended based on, per the governor anyway, of 2.5. Don't know where that's going to land. But in this particular example, for fiscal '22, it was 2.4%. So there was that increase of $169. Then additionally, in fiscal '22, they had that equity legislation of additional $10. Last year, it was $5. It has fluctuated over the years. So you'll see on this screen then, the example of the two different districts receiving that state cost per pupil based on the total amount and that equity as well. Really though, that state foundation formula sets the expenditure ceiling for each of the school district's total spending authority, and tells the school district how to fund its spending authority in regards to supplemental state aid. So what is spending authority? As I had just mentioned, this is kind of complex. So I'm going to try to make it a little bit simpler, simpler. But spending authority is similar to a maximum limit on a credit card. You have the availability to spend it, but you may not have the cash. So the maximum limit does not necessarily mean you have the cash to spend that. It is a complex calculation, and it does not generate its own cash. And any unused spending authority does carry forward to the following fiscal year. So as we take a look at that spending authority calculation, this is a, a little bit, it's the combined district cost with all of those additional adds. So it's your dropout prevention, your allowable growth, your preschool, instructional support levy, any miscellaneous income. The previous year unspent balance, budget, excuse me, authority equals your maximum authorized budget. Once you subtract your expenditures, that is your remaining unspent budget, authorized budget balance. So looking at the last three years, which I know you can't see on this screen, and I apologize, this is the lengthy, lengthy calculation. But this does review 20, 21, and 22. Over the last few years, after the last few years, it had been declining 20, 20, 21, and 22 has increased. This year, again, fiscal '22 did increase approximately $800,000. We do anticipate another increase in fiscal '23 of approximately $500,000. But we do anticipate a decrease in fiscal '24 because of the new high school opening with the additional expenditures in that building itself. So. But we do review this on a yearly basis, and we sure to monitor because that is important to have that authority available to us as we move forward.
And I apologize, I say this every year, too. It's the unspent balance or the authorized budget i- is probably the most important factor in a school district because in state code, it's strange, but a district can actually have spending authority and no cash. You can generate the cash based on your spending authority to generate that cash. However, you can have multitudes of cash, but no spending authority, and you can't spend your cash if you don't have the spending authority. So it's something that you really have to track your spending authority closely because it's much more important than cash in school finance in Iowa.
Okay. And as we move forward then, our last and final key factor is balance. And that really is the ratio of property tax and state aid, which is supporting the district's budget. And that does vary district by district. You know, the property-rich districts will receive less state aid. All districts are required to levy that $5.40 per 1,000 CEST valuation. The state foundation comes in and backfills that to 88.4%. In fiscal '22, that did change. It previously was 87.5%. Then we have our supplemental state aid, and that covers the property tax increase as a result of the increase in cost per pupil. And then we have those additional levies, which vary from district to district. So besides those four factors, we do have some general fund key factors, financial key indicators. And these are identified from the Iowa Association of School Boards. They've developed these to create a snapshot of the district's financial health. We've reviewed the certified enrollment. We took a look at that previously. We will take a brief look at the remaining, that solvency ratio, the unspent budget authority, all the way through number five, that salaries and benefits. Before we get to that, though, just a quick review of the general fund and the balances associated to them. These slides probably look familiar as they were presented in October. But you'll note the general fund balances, the total assets, which to remind those is cash receivables and inventory. Ended for fiscal '22, a little over $16.6 million. Within the fund balance is the total assets minus the payables or any expenses that you may have. So we ended the fiscal '22 at $8.56 million. And honestly, this is, is mainly due, the increase in that is mainly due to the cash on hand in which the district holds at end of June of, 30th of 2022. So when we take a quick look at the general fund expenditures, revenue history, again, you'll see the red line, or red bar indicates the revenues of a little over $69.7 million, with the gray bar of expenditures of $68 million. Just to remind those watching and, and the board, about 2.8 million of that expenditures and revenue was ESER funds. We do anticipate ESER funds to be utilized in fiscal '23, and then they do sunset in fiscal '24. So they'll, they'll no longer be available to the district. So you will see some funds remaining in the, the next coming year as well. We take a look at ISL, our instructional support levy. That is part of our general fund. These are the revenues and expenditures associated to that. These do fluctuate from year to year. You'll note the, they are utilized for replacing building furniture, for supplies, for staffs and support. But the reason they fluctuate from year to year is the buildings have discrepancy to utilize these. They can determine when they're going to utilize them and when. So that's why they, and they do carry over from year to year. So that's why they do fluctuate a bit. Expenditures can be higher one year than the actual revenues because there are carryover balances from the prior year.
So will our new building, like our new high school, will, will we, is, will it be this fund that it comes out of, or it'll be, it'll, it'll be from our capital improvements fund will, is where we'll take the?
Correct. The cost of the build itself.
FNE.
Yeah, the FNE, it comes from the actual capital projects, the build itself. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just for these funds, what Danelle is saying, that each building has an allocation, it's a per-pupil allotment, instructional support levy that they can use for specific purposes. Some of it is technology upgrades. There's things that we have kind of outlined that are building replacements through this project, and some of those carry over from year to year. There's other expenditures that happen all at once. So that's why it does fluctuate. But there's some building allotments that go along with this.
Great. So then when we take a look at the actual history of our general fund revenue, again, this probably looks familiar. Just a quick review. We have our local property tax. We have our state and our federal. Our federal, if you remember, are, include the title funds, the ESER funds, the Medicaid that we receive for federal dollars. And then we have our 3.79 million in other. And the majority of that is our open enrolled students. But it does include other dollars such as fees, rentals, and miscellaneous income and grants that we may have received. So in taking a look at our financial solvency, this would be one of the items in which ISB identifies as a key financial indicator. This measures the district's equity portion. And you will see that ISB actually updated from 5% to 7% most recently in regards to their recommendations. You'll note that the district did end for fiscal '22 at a little over 10.98% for fiscal '22. And again, this is really due to ensure that we have the cash on hand to make sure we can make those payments accordingly for the expenses that we have with the district. We also take a look at the unspent budget authority, and this is in dollars. You'll note that there is a difference between the blue and the red line, and that difference is related to the categoricals that I was speaking of. We did have some dollar categorical funds that were reserved or remaining at the end of fiscal '22. So at the end of fiscal '22, with that red line, we ended up at a little over $8.88 million. Again, we do anticipate this to increase minimally in fiscal '23, approximately $500,000, with that decrease in fiscal '24 with opening of the new high school. As we move forward then, we do have our unspent budget authority ratio. And this is, you'll note, unspent authority over expenditures, a little over 7.8 million is desired. The district is currently at 11.38%, and the goal for the district is 10%. So we continue to stay above that district goal of 10%. I like to show this when we talk about the spending authority versus the solvency ratio. This chart was provided by ISB and its recommendations. As I had indicated, the solvency ratio, they recommend now at, at 7%. They made that change. This, this does not depict that. But solvency ratio to be in the best category would be anywhere from that 5% to 25%. The district currently for fiscal '22 ended the solvency ratio of a little over 10.98%, almost 11%. And then that unspent authorized budget or UAB ratio, again, to be in that best category is between that 5% to 15%. You'll note that the district sits within that at 11.38%. Of the 327 districts, there's approximately 40 districts that sit in that category of best. And Cedar Falls currently continues to sit in that category and falls between that. As we move on then, we have our unspent budget authority ratio. Again, this is one of those key, key indicators. This measures the annual amount of UAB as a percentage of expenditures each year. You'll note for fiscal '22, we ended at a little over 1% for fiscal '22. And then we do have our days net cash ratio. And, and this really is a universal ratio in the business world. The goal is 90 days. We have not been at 90 days for several years, as you can, you can see. But we have been increasing over the past several years. And this was something that the board has worked on in, in regards to cash reserves, to ensure we have the cash available, to ensure that we have it available, to have that timeframe. For ending of June of '22, we ended the year with 78 days. So we're, we're creeping up to that 90 days and improving each year. So. We also have then our net fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And this is the measure of percent of the district's cash available to cover those non-funded months. Again, it's a district goal of 10%. We currently sit at a little over, almost 11% at 10, 10, 10.81% for end of fiscal '22. And then our fifth and final key trend indicator based on ISB is the salaries and benefits. And this measures the percentage of the district's budget dedicated to labor cost. This does fluctuate from year to year, as you can see. Historically, Cedar Falls likes to fall between in, between that 80 and 85%. For fiscal '22, we did end up at a little over 83%. We do anticipate remaining at that 83% for fiscal '23. But as I said, it really does fluctuate, and that's dependent upon the staffing needs. It's all depend upon the salary and the benefits cost associated to that as well. So we've gone through the, the indicators. So what does it look like for our supplemental state aid? Dr. Patey kind of indicated this previous- Dr. Patey kind of indicated this previously when we were talking, and that's okay. We were talking about supplemental state aid and that fluctuation. It really is our primary funding source, and you'll know, with the exception of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and currently this year, twenty, it will be for twenty-three, twenty-four, our SSA has been higher than the state average, and that's because of our increased enrollment that we had over the several years. For fiscal twenty-two, we were at four point two compared to two point four. Fiscal twenty-three, we're at four point six compared to that two point five. Based on what the legislature had indicated, it would be at that two point five SSA. That has not been finalized. It was a recommendation. Where would the district fall? It would be approximately about one point four percent based on the two point five. So it would be a little bit over the six hundred thousand dollars of new money. And just to remind the board, we did have, we do have reserves of that, approximately two hundred thousand, and that's, the district had finalized a two-year agreement with a few of our bargaining units as well. So, but honestly, this amount is unknown. We don't know it. We're waiting for the passage from the legislature and governor, and until that passage, it's kind of one of those unknowns for planning purposes right now.
So the being below two and a half percent, that's due to our lower certified enrollment?
Correct. Yep. So we made it through the general fund. We have a few more funds to go through, as you can see on these silos. I'll go rather quickly on these. These are restricted funds. They have their specific purposes and usages. But majority of these slides you have seen, but I do want to remind you because we will be starting to have conversations in regards to certified budget here in February, March, and April. So we'll take a quick look at those. Our management fund, again, these are all restricted. These funding sources are property tax, and that's based on the need. It's based on the property of workman's comp, our property insurances, our property loss, unemployment. You'll see for our management fund, after a few years of decline, it has stayed the same, or a minimal decline for fiscal twenty-two. We do anticipate, we need to continue to watch this fund as we need to have this fund increased a bit, but we have been notified and do anticipate for fiscal twenty-four, an increase of approximately seventeen to twenty percent for our premiums. So we will be monitoring this fund rather closely.
And, and, and a property casualty insurance, general?
Correct.
General liability insurance?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Part of that is, is due to the increase in building values and the need to increase the building values because of the cost of the construction and the replacement of those building values. So they have to monitor those and ensure that those are accurate as well.
And we'll have a new building.
And we will have a new building, yes. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. As we move forward then, this is our SAVE, our local option sales, one ta, one cent sales tax. This is from the state sales tax revenue. It is distributed monthly. The one thousand thirty-seven dollars per pupil, and that's per year. It also, the revenues are fund sourcing, is our bond proceeds. Again, this can be utilized for the construction, remodeling, emergency repairs, and then also payment of our principal and interest for our general obligation bonds. You'll note on the next slide then, just the balances of that, ending fiscal twenty-two, we had a beginning balance of thirty-eight million. If you remember, we had sold sales tax revenue bonds in the prior year of thirty-two point nine million for the purposes of constructing the new high school. With the sales tax revenue and interest, we had total available of a little over forty-five million with projects expenses. As the high school moved along, we had a little over thirty-one million with our bond payments as well, ending balance of a little over ten million dollars. And again, this just reflects the ending balances in our total assets fund balance and unrestricted fund balance. Taking a look at the history of the SAVE, you'll see that each building has been touched by utilization of these dollars. The larger, obviously, increase most recently is the new construction of our new high school, which has a little over thirty-three percent, but it has been utilized in all of our other buildings as well throughout the time period of the SAVE funds. This is our outstanding revenue bond debt. You'll note that the district does have three outstanding revenue bonds. That's our Series two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand twenty-one, most recent of that thirty-two point nine million dollars. And there is no expectation at this time for additional revenue bonds for fiscal twenty-three or fiscal twenty-four. We also have then our physical plant and levy or our PEPAL. Again, this is two parts. This is Board of Education-controlled at the thirty-three cents. We do have then our dollar thirty-four, which is voter-approved. Again, those uses are very similar, exactly the same as our SAVE or LOT, which can be utilized. You'll note that in our physical plant and levy, that you'll see that there has been an increase the last couple of years, and that's really because of the delayed projects, of the, because of the increased construction costs. The board had made the decision to delay those projects. You will start to see a decrease in this fund in fiscal twenty-three, and specifically because of the new build of the new pool. These funds will be utilized with the new high school pool. We have our debt service. The community graciously passed our GO bonds for our Aldrich Elementary, North Cedar, and Orchard Hill of the thirty-two million dollars, but also the high school, the sixty-nine point nine million. Those proceeds are from the sale of the general obligation bonds, and they're deposited in to the capital projects, which we utilize. And then we have our revenues from the debt service that are deposited for their retiring principal and interest. Again, a very restricted fund specifically for that purpose. The remaining fund balance for fiscal twenty-two was just the interest on that account, which will be utilized for the future payments of our debt service levy. Again, this is just a review of our outstanding general obligation bonds, and you'll see that that continues to decrease over the years as those bonds become due. Again, we have that Series two thousand seventeen and Series two thousand twenty-two for our general obligation bonds. We do have our activity fund, and our activity fund would be our gates and admissions as well as any student fees. It's utilized for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Again, this is a restricted fund. You'll note that, once again, that the fund balance did increase, and this really is a testament to Mr. Troy Becker and his team, ensuring that we have those funds available to continue those activities in a positive direction. So we ended fiscal twenty-two of a little over six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then finally, we get to our nutrition fund. That is our lunch fees. It's not property tax. It's lunch fees as well as state and federal reimbursements, and you'll note the associated expenditures related to that. We can pay salary and benefits out of this because it is its own standalone fund, proprietary fund, as well as food and supplies. You'll also note that there was an increase over the last two years, fiscal twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two, and that's because of the availability to all of our students the last two years to have one free lunch and one free breakfast, and the increased participation because of that. That did change in fiscal twenty-three, so we do anticipate a decrease in our fund balances and those available balances. The difference between the three would be the total assets, the fund balance, and then that fund balance with, without the pension notated. So we made it through all of the funds. This really is just a summary of that. Thanks for hanging in there with me. You'll note for end of June of two thousand twenty-two, the district's cash balance, it did increase again from June of twenty-one. Our net cash ratio did increase. Our solvency ratio increased, as well as the unspent budget authority increased from the prior year. The one thing we want to keep note of is decreases and increases in enrollment without increases in supplemental state aid really does push a pressure on the general fund, as well as, we didn't talk about the special education. We do continue to meet those needs of those students. Medicaid funding does help reduce those special education expenses. If you recall, our net receipts for fiscal twenty-two was a little over seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. This is estimated to remain flat for fiscal twenty-three. We did have a deficit, if you recall, which was approved or was discussed during October, of three hundred and sixty-five thousand for fiscal twenty-two. We do have a projected deficit, again, for fiscal twenty-three of a little over six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Things we want to watch and pay attention to is if there's any loss in federal state revenues or increase in expenditures that can impact the general fund, and it does impact our UAB as well, our unspent authorized budget. The one thing we will take a look at is amending fiscal twenty-three budget. We always review this. That's because there are always expenditures that are unexpected at the time of when, eighteen months ago, when we were setting up the budget. So we will take a look at that to ensure we are compliant, as Janelle had indicated from Carney Alexander in regards to complacency. But we really just continue to monitor that budget and make sure that we maintain a positive learning environment and really a positive fiscal condition. So I would be remiss without thanking our business staff. Actually, Jana Speck, our supervisor, financial supervisor, is here with us tonight, so does absorb an amount of work. I'd like to thank her as well as administration and the board. It really is a collaborative effort to ensure we continue on the right path and as we begin our discussions for certified budget here soon, so. A lot of information.
Lots of information. Yep. Thank you, thank you. You, obviously, the business office is one that many people don't see, but without it, we couldn't accomplish what happens in the front offices, which is educating the students. So thank you to you and for all the staff, everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
Very much. Very good. Thank you. Moving now to the statement in support of public education.
Yeah.
Did we miss a motion on the?
Oh, your, your.
Audit?
We did miss a motion.
We did miss a motion. Thank you, Lowell.
We did.
So, gonna back up just for a second here, and we do need to approve the audit that was presented by Janelle. So, thank you for that, Lowell. Go ahead.
All right. I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year audit as presented.
Thank you. It's her second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Now, Dr. Patey.
Yeah, so this is really a collaborative statement that we put together to present to the board this evening. I think with the legislature and some of the work that they've been undertaking here as they've started in January, there's a lot of uncertainty in public education, uncertainty with our staff, some angst that's present as far as what's going to happen and could happen as we look at the future of it, public education in the state of Iowa. You'll see that there's a lot of districts across the state that have put out statements, different components. We work collaboratively with CFEA, appreciate their work and all that they do for the district and supporting our students and our entire community, as well as CFESP, and the work that they do is so immensely important for the work of our students as well. When other districts release their statements, there was a lot of what we oppose statements, and we really work to try to create what we support, and really the focus on, as public education across the state of Iowa, what is, what is important to really try to promote regionally and statewide. And really what the statement talks about is supporting public education, supporting public education for funding and funding levels, so we can do the work that we do as Janelle talked about, as Kiana talked about, for the work for our students, for activities and educational components, as well as enrichments. A second component that is talked about in the statement is transparency, to make sure that there's continued transparency, regardless of where public dollars go. I think with the new estimates by the Legislative Services Act, which is a nonpartisan group that looks at funding, part of the ESE or ESA could cost anywhere from nine hundred million to one billion dollars over the course of the next four years. And then finally is really that academic accountability is what we support. We want high levels of expectations for all kids across the board, regardless of where they are served and the educational format. All kids deserve high levels of education. Danelle talked about budget. Serve students. We are a district of choice in a lot of different ways. Kids, families want to be here because of that educational excellence and high expectations, and all kids everywhere deserve that. And there's times where, through some of the legislative acts recently with what's called independent private instruction, there is no accountability for students. And in fact, we might find out that there's not a student, or we didn't know there's a student in our community until they enroll in our community as fifth, sixth, seventh graders, because there's no testing, there's no accountability, there's no framework to be able to help support those students. So there's just a lot of components that are here to help say we support public education, but we really support funding, transparency, academic accountability for all kids across the board.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Patey. So I do a motion to approve the resolution.
I move Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the statement in support of public education as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Motion approves, and we do want to recognize our educators and peer educators. Thank you, and of course, staff for all the hard work and things that you do to, for our students each and every day. So thank you very much for your support.
It's amazing.
Moving now to superintendent's report. Dr. Patey.
All I have down is a legislative update, so I'm going to, one of the most important things that I've talked with multiple people about is advocacy, the legislature, there's the statement, support of public education. We have a day on the hill coming up on Tuesday, February fourteenth, and I'm going to be pessimistic here for a minute, so I apologize. I know when I reach out sometimes to legislators across the state, the impact, when I talk about change in education, doesn't necessarily resonate as large of the voice of parents, business leaders, those that might maybe don't have a direct stake in the game within the world of public education. So we do have a day on the hill that's coming up through IASB. In the past, we've taken down representation from CFEA, from CFESP, from our community, from parents. So it's a day that we certainly would encourage not only board members, if you're interested, please come, and we can take a van down or one of our school vehicles down. That is Tuesday, February fourteenth. Not sure why they selected Valentine's Day, but it's Valentine's Day, and certainly would invite any of our community members that would want to take part. But more importantly, if there's something that you are passionate about, be it ESEA, vouchers, some of those bills, please reach out. We encourage you, because we know sometimes the voice, some of the things, the action steps that we take don't have necessarily, don't resonate in the same way that it might come from parents, community members, business leaders, other individuals in the community, because again, they're seeing it from the lens of, we want this because we believe in public education, we believe in, and again, the transparency, the accountability, that's taking place. I did, I am on the local Grow Cedar Valley Chamber Alliance Board, and that was one of the comments that came from that group as well, is just that, that level of transparency, the level of funding and accountability, and I think that's important for legislators to hear as we are all advocating and trying to find the right path to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Patey. Any questions?
Uh, Dr. Patey, I wonder if, in regards to the, some of the state legislation, the one that kind of caught my eye here this morning was brought to my attention was the one regarding the proposed property tax changes. I don't know if.
So that's a big one.
Yeah, I know, and it's kind of related to what we were talking about today, you know, the financial reports and stuff like that, but.
And so we.
And we, I doubt we've even begun to game what those changes might look out, look like.
No, so what Director Gruber's talking about is there's a bill that impacts the rollback for actually this budget year for cities, counties, and schools that would dramatically change what those funding sources could be or could look like. We've talked to our county about those changes. We've reached out to our state advocates. They have said at this time, it doesn't look like that has a large amount of traction, so don't spend too much time, you know, worrying about that. But again, you never know how quickly some of those winds can change and blow as far as inaction of bills. It's one we're watching, but it could have pretty significant impact on all budgets statewide. statewide, school districts.
Yeah, it will have significant.
It will, if passed as stated. But we don't have great detail on that yet. We're still trying to collect some additional information, but right now, statewide, they're saying, pause and don't worry, because right now it doesn't look like there's the support
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from board members?
I'm ready to carry me.
Yeah, I think so, Joyce. If not, I will repeat your question.
No, it's not a question.
Okay.
I just know if you have time, the House is still debating the voucher bill, so I would suggest taking the time to go home and log in and watch it. It's very interesting conversation, and they're right in the middle of it right now, so you can watch it live, and you can live email our legislators in real time about questions, comments, or concerns that you may have as they're talking about it right now.
And what we're hearing is that they probably won't vote on it, because I do believe that there is some discussion as far as the support in the House for it to pass. So reaching out with your voice is extremely important.
All right. Thank you, Joyce, for that. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I move.
Thank you, Jenny. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lowell. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.